We have the roll call read by the clerk.
Supervisor Brownell.
Here.
Supervisor Lawrence Eddy.
Here.
Supervisor Brownell.
Here.
Supervisor Bonhardt.
Here.
Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Furrow.
Here.
Supervisor Connerlader.
Here.
Supervisor La.
Here.
Supervisor McGee.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
Supervisor Crowe.
Here.
Supervisor Clear.
Here.
Supervisor Enzo.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, unregapped, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, please be seated. Next up, our presentation. We have the first one of the Seneca County Sheriff's Accreditation Recognition. Excuse me. Welcome, Sheriff. You doing good?
Yes, doing great. Thank you. I feel a lot better than I did a couple of weeks ago. I can tell you that.
Yeah, holy moly.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce Peter Kehoe. He's the Executive Director of the New York State Sheriff's Association. He's going to do some presentations for the Seneca County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, folks. It's my great pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of all the sheriffs of New York State to recognize and honor your sheriff, Jim Luce, and the men and women of the Seneca County Sheriff's Office on the occasion of reaccreditation of the Sheriff's Civil Division, Corrections Division, and the Court Security Division. Only 27 of the state's 62 counties have qualified for civil accreditation, only 33 have qualified for corrections accreditation, and only nine have qualified for court security accreditation, and even fewer have earned all three. So obviously, this is no easy accomplishment. And furthermore, Sheriff Luce and his office continue to maintain accreditation of their law enforcement division through the New York State Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Council. So these achievements are a great testament to Sheriff Luce, and to Sheriff Clear, and the entire staff of your sheriff's office, and they clearly demonstrate their dedication to the pursuit of excellence in their profession. You have an outstanding sheriff's office here that is well-respected throughout the state, and the citizens of Seneca County and this Board of Supervisors should be very proud of this sheriff's office. I'd like to say a few things about the Sheriff's Civil Division, which is the strong right arm of the court system. Not many people know exactly what the Sheriff's Civil Office does, and it may not seem as glamorous as criminal law enforcement work, but without civil enforcement officers, our civil courts just would not function. An order of a judge would be just a piece of paper unless someone were there to enforce that order. Civil law enforcement is often tough work and can be every bit as dangerous as criminal work. Too often, angry litigants take out their frustration with the court system on the deputy sheriff who is just doing his or her job serving and enforcing orders of the court. So I think we owe a debt of gratitude to the members of the civil office for their willingness to take on that task and for their willingness to work at being the very best at it through accreditation. Similarly, corrections officers too have a tough job. They spend a large part of their lives locked up behind bars with some of the worst people in our society. They keep us safe from those people, but they also must keep those people safe from each other, and they must always be mindful that some of the people in their charge are actually innocent, and they also must remember always that both the innocent and the guilty are entitled to humane, respectful treatment in the jail. It's a tough, enviable job that we ask these good public servants to perform, and we owe them our gratitude for their willingness to do it and to do it right. And here in Seneca County, obviously, they do it right, as evidenced by this reaccreditation tonight. And tonight, we also recognize the professionalism and the dedication of the men and women who work in court security, which is an area of heightened concern these days, of course, not only on the part of our judges, but also on the part of all those who work in our courthouses and also all the people who have to come to our courts to do business. Alert professional court security staff keep our courts and courthouses open, safe, and accessible, and without them, our court system could not be open to the public, and that would be contrary to our whole concept of justice. So we owe them a debt of gratitude also for the good job that they do in court security. Now accreditation is not something that's just available for the asking. To achieve accreditation requires that the agency meets a very stringent set of standards developed by experts in the areas of a sheriff's responsibility. To gain accreditation, each division had to submit to scrutiny by an outside independent Board of Supervisors, Board of Assessors, which reviewed their operations in detail to ascertain whether or not they met these many demanding standards. And I'm happy to report that the three independent Boards of Assessors, which reviewed the operations of the Seneca County Sheriff's Office in these three divisions, found that they do meet and in fact exceed every one of those standards. Congratulations are in order for Sheriff Luce and all the men and women of Seneca County Sheriff's Office for these accomplishments. But congratulations are also in order for the Seneca County Board of Supervisors and for the citizens of Seneca County, for without your moral support and without your financial support, these achievements and the outstanding service provided by your sheriff's office to all the citizens of Seneca County and all the areas of sheriff's responsibility just would not be possible. And I must say that accreditation does not just happen. It takes a lot of hard work by a lot of people, and the entire staff of the sheriff's office deserve to be recognized and applauded for these achievements tonight. But I particularly want to recognize a few individuals who devoted a great deal of time and effort to the many administrative and operational details required in order to successfully demonstrate that the Seneca County Sheriff's Office is most deserving of these reaccreditations tonight. So first, I'd like to present a certificate to Deputy James Pieschi, who was the Accreditation Manager for all three divisions. He oversees all of the accreditation processes. Is Deputy here?
The only one here today is Sergeant Smith.
Okay, so then I'll...
The rest of them are working or...
Okay, so Sergeant Smith is in charge of the Civil Division and shepherded that accreditation through, so we want to congratulate you, Sergeant. And I also want to recognize Sergeant Elizabeth...well Sergeant, Deputy Pieschi I've mentioned, Sergeant Elizabeth Cook from the Corrections Division, Sergeant Timothy O'Neill from the Court Security Division, and Sergeant Luke Laskowski from the Court Security Division. I want to thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to publicly proclaim all the good work that's being done by your sheriff's office here in Seneca County. And then I want to present these plaques to the sheriff and his staff, recognizing these achievements tonight, and then I think the sheriff will have a few words to say. So this is a certificate of reaccreditation for the Civil Division. This is a heavy certificate of reaccreditation for the Court Security Division. And a certificate of reaccreditation of the Corrections Division.
Sheriff?
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you for coming and taking your time out of your day to help us recognize all these people.
Always my pleasure to recognize a sheriff and to meet with you folks, and thank you for your support of the sheriff.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the board because the reason we could even continue this, we had to do it with approval through the board itself. So I want to thank the board and the chairman and Mitch Rowe, and let you know that to do this, there's over 166 standards that we have to meet, which are best practices throughout the state. Like Peter Kehoe said, they come in and for three days, they review all our records and kind of spot check and just grab whatever they want to look at and make sure that we're following the policies and procedures and best practices. And I just want to thank everybody for our opportunity and hopefully this and the work of the sheriff's office itself, all the people, and they have to buy into it or it doesn't work. So they work hard at it. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for being here tonight. Next up is Tourism Promotion Agency Quarterly Report. Jeff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank all of you for your time and attention tonight. On your desk, I asked Margaret to pass out the report, so you have that copy in front of you. It's an incredibly positive report, very strong results. I'm incredibly proud of our staff and certainly proud of the results that we have to share with you tonight. So I will start by saying I really wanted to cover the five or six topics on the front here that says TPA report. First of all, our office has invested money from the occupancy fund to go into mobile research. We have never had really reliable research that is specific to Seneca County before. We've always relied on other studies, certainly the state study is one, but we have now been involved in this project and received really great data on Seneca County specifically. So we partnered with a company called Rove and Domo using Uber Media Network, which is the largest maker of apps, cellphone apps, and it tracked cellphone users from out of the area as they came to Seneca County. So those people that had cellphone services that are turned on, you know, you have the privacy settings, but those that are turned on, they were able to track that. And so it gave us an incredible sample size. We studied 30 points of interest all throughout the county, and you can see there from 2019 to 2020, because 2021 is ongoing, 31% increase in visitation to Seneca County. It does match with numbers that we were hearing on the ground from our individual tourism properties. So really positive, positive numbers there. The next area down, we expanded our digital advertising over the past year. We broke into this field a couple of years ago with the increase in occupancy tax. Last year, we had a great base to start with. This year, we took it to another level. And you can see, just in the month of July, we had 545,000, over 545,000 digital impressions across the e-universe, if you will. We're working with a company called Street Sense. They are a national company. They have a lot of experience in the Finger Lakes region. Specifically, they work with the Seneca Lake Wine Trail as well. So we felt really comfortable with them, as did our committee and our advisory group. So as I put there, we set a single month record in July for impressions, which basically helps power the reach of Seneca County, gets our message across on internet websites, social media for sure, also email marketing efforts as well. And really powerful is the cost per click. I don't know how many of you are involved in cost per click and digital advertising, but I put on the page what our cost per clicks are. For social, it's 28 cents, and for paid search, it's 69 cents. So that is a really strong cost per click in the digital marketing world. So we are really, really super proud of that. That shows we are optimizing our keywords, and this consultant that we are using is doing very well with us.
Jeff, just...
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what that means, CPC? That's a new term I haven't heard in farming, so...
So it stands for Cost Per Click Supervisor. So basically, this is how it works. We buy an ad, whether it be on Google or Facebook, and as that ad comes up to our target audience and they click on it, we take the cost, the overall spend cost, and we divide it by the amount of people that actually clicked on that ad, go to our website, and that's where you come up with a cost per click. So it's a really, really strong number. Finally, website growth. So I have come in front of you on previous TPA reports and talked at length about the investment we made in the website, and I am over the moon with the results over the last two years. This has been a process. We started with an investment into an updated website. Last year, we were able to do more as the occupancy tax grew. This year, we were able to do even more. So this is a combination of driving traffic to our website through advertising and the optimization, the search engine optimization that we have been involved with. And so in the month of July, 17,000, almost 18,000 website sessions to the Seneca County Tourism Page, which is incredible. We're on pace for 100,000 site visits this year alone. It's a 258% increase, and even more impressive is the jump in organic search. This is people that are searching Google, for example, have a specific search term in mind. Our webpage comes up because of the optimization of our site, and people are clicking through and finding the information on Seneca County. So both of those numbers are incredible, and we are really, really proud of the results that we are seeing with website and digital advertising. On the back, I gave you an example of one of our bi-monthly newsletters. We are sending these out twice a month to...they're really double opt-in subscribers, so they've had to go through a process to basically say, do you really want to receive a message from Seneca County Tourism? Do you really want to know about Seneca County Tourism? We do that twice. We actually do it a third time. So they're a double opt-in subscriber. We've grown this database over the last year, just in the last few months, by 7,000. So we have a little over 10,000 people, subscribers, that get Seneca County Tourism news, information twice a month. And so on the page, you see one of those. This was advertisement, a little story about Portico at Del Lago. But you can see incredible amount of leads that have been added to this email database. These are target people that have already expressed an interest in possibly coming to Seneca County or have been here already in the tourism world and have spent money here. So that's really positive. I've talked a lot about public relations. That's the next category I think I'd like to talk about, and that is we had some very high-powered, high-profile story placements. This is a process that we sit down once a month. We work with our team to pitch public relations stories to media travel writers, producers from TV segments. So in May and June, we landed on the Today Show, today.com. You can see the screen capture from the story that the Today Show ran on their website, and that's the, obviously, the knitting mill shot in Seneca Falls. So we were super proud to see that and how widespread that was shared. So between that, and it was syndicated on MSN, Yahoo, and Newsbreak, Thrillist, online publication, featured the Keogah Seneca Canal in July, which is really cool because we don't...the lakes obviously get the attention, but we don't always get the attention for the Keogah Seneca Canal. So we were really thrilled with that. And then in August, the August edition of Philadelphia Magazine, which is one of those target markets that we have seen a noticeable increase in visitors coming from, in August, Philadelphia Magazine featured lively-run goat dairy in Interlake. And so these are all examples of what comes from our public relations pitches. And we do this on a monthly basis. It's a regular part of our programming, and when we get some of these wins like this, it is just ecstatic because you cannot buy comparable coverage to what these publications do for these businesses. And so just a few noteworthy items to wrap up. When I came before you the last time, we talked about how Seneca County was up for a statewide Tourism Excellence Award. Happy to report that Seneca County did in fact win that. It's now the second time that we have received in the last five years that we have received a Tourism Marketing Excellence Award. And we, this year, we received special recognition from the Director of I Love New York for Empire State Development, Ross Levi. So it was really a great moment for our team. Really excited about the recognition that it brought to Seneca County. Couple other things. We offered a cooperative program this year, and nine of our tourism business partners around the county participated by placing brochures at the state fair. All 18 days of the state fair, we were able to have a branded kiosk for Seneca County. So I don't know if any of you went to the state fair this year, but if you did and you went into the Tourism Information Center, you would have saw a whole kiosk dedicated for Seneca County, and it was filled with local partners who we only charged them $50 to do that. So it was a great cooperative win-win for both us and for our partners. I talked about the research right off the bat. We have sent out now, we have sent the 2019 data to all of the tourism properties that we have on file in Seneca County. They received that information, the same information that we have used to get these results. We have in fact turned around and sent them out to our partners. So they all have a copy of the 2019 data. We're still working through 2021, so we will have that at a later time, but we did offer to go over what we have to date with our partners. So that went out and has been very positive. There is work started on a new video series. We're doing a virtual food tour through Seneca County. So we have a lot of...you probably hear a lot about some of the food establishments outside our county, but you don't necessarily hear about some of the great culinary destinations we have here. So this is a great way I think we are going to do to promote Seneca County food establishments in specific. And one last thing I just want to hit is a partnership that we have, that we were able to work through our State Tourism Association. Seneca County was selected one of seven across the state, and we have entered into a partnership with Airbnb. And Airbnb created an entire website dedicated to a program called roam the empire. It's a way that the state of New York is trying to promote travel within the state from people in their backyard. So the messaging was, last year, you had to travel close to home because you had to. This year, we want you because you want to. And so it's called roam the empire. Airbnb put up a whole website about it promoting Seneca County and obviously the things to do, places to stay here in this county. We're the only county in the Finger Lakes that's part of this relationship, this promotion. So super excited about that. I know we talk about short-term vacation rentals a lot, and this is an example of a huge company, Airbnb, working with us in a very positive manner. So that's my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Jeff?
I do.
Yes?
Yes, sir. So just because I don't want to go by hearsay, but I did...could you give us some information about your golf tournament and how much you captured in that? And quite honestly, I've been asked questions out in the community about how many holes actually did the Keogah Indian Nation sponsor in that golf tournament?
Yeah, so we had a really successful golf tournament this year. We had 34 teams in it, which was one of the largest for us. We didn't have as well-good of a day. It was a little rainy. Keogah Nation was one of our sponsors for that golf tournament, and they had a whole presence on our course. And so they were one of several sponsors that we had for that golf tournament.
Right. Have they always participated in the golf tournament?
I can't speak to before I was here, but this was the first year since I've been at the chamber.
And your chamber board was okay with the Keogah Indian Nation, that, you know, we've been fighting for years, and I can't even tell you how much money the state and county has spent. They were okay with them coming on board and being in the tournament then?
I think it was a positive relationship, positive experience, and I think it was a good step forward with relations between all of us in this community with the Keogah Nation.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
One follow-up on the question. Do you want to know how many holes was there a sign on? Was it on all 18 holes?
A hole sponsorship sign? Yeah, they had a hole sign on all 18 holes.
18 holes.
Okay.
That data doesn't mean anything. Why don't you just ask how much was their sponsorship? That would mean more.
That's your question?
They paid $100 for a hole sponsorship on each hole.
$1,800.
Same as everyone, by the way. It's the same price as everyone.
Just making, you know, some people might now that a hole sponsor doesn't cost $100, right?
Sure.
I just had a question on the brochures at the fair. Was that available to any Seneca County business that wanted to be in it or just...
Any Seneca County tourism business was able to do that, and not everyone did it. But $50 was our price point. We thought it was really reasonable, and I think the people that were able to do that had a good experience. So we hope to do that in the future. I know the state fair is being moved back from 18, back to its original length, but I think based on this experience, it was our pilot, right? So it was a test run, and based on the feedback that I received, I would expect that this would be certainly an opportunity we'd want to bring forward in the future because it's a great benefit for especially smaller tourism businesses in our community that don't have a whole lot of money to spend on marketing promotion like this.
Thank you.
How were the tourism industry establishments notified about that?
So we sent out multiple email blasts primarily is how we did it. We also advertised in our newsletter, so. But we have a separate database just for, aside from chamber membership, we have a whole database just for tourism-based businesses in our community, so.
Would you consider a golf course a tourism-based industry?
I would, yes.
Okay. I just never saw any news blast about that, that's all. I'd be the guy that would see it all. I was just wondering.
We'll get with you offline and make sure that you're on that, on this. But I'm pretty sure Seneca Falls, country of this.
Yeah.
The only challenge, I would say, on that opportunity was businesses had to have a rack card. They had to have a brochure printed already for it, and that was a problem with some businesses, but...
Just one more question. Don't want to beat a horse to death, but how many teams of the Keogahs played in the golf tournament? Or did they just want to do the hole sponsor?
No, I believe, no, they had a team. I believe they had one team.
One team. One team in 18 holes. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. Next up, we don't have any petition or I don't think tonight, right, Margaret? No petitions? Okay, next, open privilege of the floor. If anybody would like to address the board, now's the time to do it. Guess not. Okay, your time is up. Next up, approval of meeting minutes. August 10th, board meeting and the special board meeting of the 24th, as revised.
Still moved?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both approved. Next up, approval of standing committees. I have a list here. Didn't get on the agenda here, but Public Works.
You may be going out of order just to give your heads up.
Okay. Public Works.
Sure. Public Works Committee, Matt, August 24th. We talked about a whole bunch of stuff. First thing, we had a presenter to the board for, his name was Brian Wilkins from Wilkins RV, for a proposal for a 50,000-square-foot building and tire, which will anticipate to hire 200 employees. Is looking for some help with a sewer line, but I don't know if that's going to slow them down. I believe that they are ready to go and looking forward to doing business here. Second item that was not on the agenda for later is Seneca County broadband. Seneca County and Gensie County were not successful in their grant application in Northern Borders Regional Commission for Funding to Undertake a Broadband Cap Analysis Project. Mitch has figured a way to get around that, and basically utilizes a portion of the funding from the NBRC to contract directly with ECC Technologies to commence the work immediately in Seneca County. The cost would be approximately $20,000, and the county would have the data in approximately six weeks. The second part of that is broadband availability and adoption survey is to utilize the Public Service Commission project for the aspect of the overall project with no cost to Seneca County. This information may not be available until quarter one of 2022. Business plan, which is number three, contract with ECC Technologies at the completion of tax one. ECC Technologies would... ECC Technologies will develop a business plan that will include recommended options for broadband investments and development network technologies, detailed infrastructure and electronic equipment requirements. The business plan will identify the business strategy, capital investment partnership, options, roles, and responsibilities. The costs of work will be approximately $45,000, utilizing the remaining N B R C broadband funds and supplement with county funds, and the county would have the information approximately eight weeks from Task One. Third thing we discussed was financing and updating on the Route 318 Capital Project, which will be the closure of the capital, capital project for Route 318 Sewer, and funding options on how to fund Sewer District Number Three. There's a lot of boring numbers that follow that, and I'm sure that we'll come up with some conclusions of that at a later committee date. That's all Public Works did outside of the resolutions that'll follow.
Okay. Thank you very much, Supervisor Trout. Next up, personnel. Chair Supervisor Ferrara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel Committee will have two resolutions tonight for board approval. First one is reclassify full-time human resource assistants to personnel technician trainee. This is a, a switch around. This person will assist with the evaluation of positions, et cetera, et cetera. The salary would be $3,300 more than the salary for the full-time H R assistant. And also a resolution to retain, retainer agreement with our Labor and Employment Attorneys, Romer Williams and Gold and Munro L L P. The current retainer agreement expires at the end of this fiscal year, or calendar year, I should say, and that's $45,600 annual fee. And we also will have not resolution, but approval, approved, the vacancy committee and the Personnel Committee approved refilling of five positions, a full-time social welfare examiner, two full-time employment and training counselors, one temporary full-time social welfare examiner, one temporary part-time aging service aide, also for hep, and one full-time substance abuse counselor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Supervisor Ferrara. Next up, Human Services, Chairman McGreevy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Services Committee also met on August 24th. On tonight's agenda under Human Services, we have three resolutions to consider. One, a contract for a part-time behavioral health specialist provided by Children's Home of Wyoming Conference. The specialist will work onsite at the Health Department for 21 hours per week at a cost not to exceed $50,000. Two, to approve the supervision and treatment services plan for juveniles for the timeframe October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022. The plan provides for local services to divert youth from placement and replacement in detention or residential care. And lastly, the third resolution is to appoint Julie Maslin from the Finger Lakes Visitors Connection to fill the vacancy made by the resignation of John Mueller on the Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board. That's all I have, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman McGreevy. Next up, Planning Development Agriculture and Tourism, Chairman Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Planning Development Agriculture and Tourism Committee met on August 24th. We passed two items out of committee, and will be in front of this board tonight, one being the purchase of a new aircraft refueller for the Finger Lakes Regional Airport, the other being the, to authorize the transfer of properties to the Finger Lakes Regional Land Bank Corporation. These are six properties that we've identified. However, it is my intention to table this motion for another month. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chairman Barnhart. Next up, Technology, Chairman Clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on August 24th as well. We only have one resolution that we're seeking approval on for this evening is to authorize the purchase of Microsoft Office 365. This is basically to update the county's email, and it, because the Microsoft Office email that we currently use is no longer supported, so this amount is not to exceed $82,190.40. That's all we have for this evening.
Thank you. Chairman Clear. Next up, Public Health Services, Chairman Borst.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Health Services Committee also met August 24th, 2021. Thank you to Supervisor Reynolds for taking my place on that. It looks like it's a huge list here. First off, we discussed a contract to the New York State Department of Health for the Tobacco Enforcement Grant. Asked the board to consider accepting funding for $27,294 for a period of April 1, 2021 to March 31, 2022. Also discussed was a contract with New York State Department of Health for the Water Enhancement Grant. That grant is $92,849, period of April 1, 2021 to March 31, 2022. Prove a contract with Karen Miller to provide services for preschool program. Karen Miller, physical therapist at Romulus, New York, is available to provide these services until December 31, 2022, not to exceed $55 per half-hour sessions. Fourth, contract to New York State Department of Health for the Immunization Action Grant. Accept grant funding for $31,050 for the period of April 1, 2021 to March 31, 2022. Number five, contract to New York State Department of Health to receive the COVID vaccine response grant. Consider accepting the grant funding for $68,134.51 to Seneca County to assist with the COVID-19 vaccine response efforts. Funds are available immediately for that one, can be utilized for expenses incurred from January 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. Also consider a purchase of a handheld XRF lead paint analyzer device. Number of childhood lead poisoning cases in corresponding home establishments has increased substantially since New York State lowered the threshold for lead poisoning in early 2020. Health Department has taken the purchase in XRF that is used to detect the presence of lead-based paint. What they want to purchase is a PB 200I Lead Paint Analyzer manufactured by Vicon Detection, cost of $16,480. It's the same one used by the state district offices, and I believe they've been borrowing that when they can, so they're pretty familiar with that machine. Funding source for the XRF device is the Health Department 21, 2021 Budget, Lead Grant $8,000, and the Performance Improvement Grant of $8,480. Next, approve a contract with the Seneca Kyuga Gates Chapter N Y S A R C D B A Mosaic to provide evaluation services for children in the Seneca County Three to Five Program. Reimbursement rate is set by New York State Education Department. The contract will cover the period of September 15, 2021 through December 31, 2022. We also had some discussion and updates on COVID-19 and the protocol, and that's all I have.
Okay, that's a lot. See, you had a night off.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Government Operation, Chairperson Cindy Garlick, Lawrence Eddy.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we will bring to the board to reconsider reimplementing a universal mask policy for county buildings. Thank you.
Good, okay. Thank you. Okay. Next up, Public Safety, Chairman Brunel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Under Public, we met on August 24th. Under Public Safety, we have a resolution authorizing a contract renewal for case management system maintenance for software support at the Public Defender's Office for $1,000 annually. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chairman Brunel. Finance Assessment and Insurance, Chairman Reynolds.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Heisen. Finance Assessment and Insurance Committee met, and we have two items to bring the board tonight. One is going to be the county equalization rate for 2022, and the other one is just some budget adjustments for 2021 budget. That's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chairman Reynolds. Next up, Mental Health Services, Chairman Enzlo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Mental Health Services Committee met on August 24th. Tonight, we will consider amending the contract with Janice Kramer, who provides clinician services for clients who are recipients of Medicaid, Medicare. The amendment will increase her time by 350 hours. The annual contract would increase from $19,960 to $33,960. The increase of hours would be supported by the collection of medical fees. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman Enzlo. Next up, Environmental Affairs, Chair Cronenwetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Environmental Affairs Committee met August 24th, and we're going to bring a proposal forward to establish a septic system inspection program. I'll read it when we get to it. We also talked about Kyuga Lake having the most harmful algae blooms of the Finger Lakes, and the fact that we're in a great position for a septic system inspection program, having Scott King on board that has 20 years' experience managing this exact program for Kyuga County. That's all I got.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chairman Cronenwetter. Next up, Water and Sewer Treatment Management and Operations, Chairman Hayes.
The committee met on August 31st, and our, we discussed the sewage, hillside sewage flow that has ceased, and we give credit to the staff at Blue Herring. We have to move forward now regarding the financial implications of decommissioning. The contract for water and sewer administration in operation with the Village of Waterloo has been executed. Jim Bromka brought a list recommended of recommended projects in detail. Peter Baker will come at the next committee meeting cycle to review plant upgrades, and there'll be a resolution declaring the Board of Supervisor lead agency for the Seeker. Docs has yet to respond regarding financial contribution for the sewer upgrades. The C F A application for Sewer Two I N I study has been submitted. It was worked out with Hunt Engineering, and we should hear the results in early December. Proposed Water and Sewer Authority Study, we received six proposals. They were emailed to the supervisors, which consists of 177 pages. The committee, the committee will review the proposals at offline meeting. County Manager Roel will propose dates via an email the next couple of days for when we would meet with the respected engineering companies to, so the committee can speak with them. I also brought up the fact that we needed to fix, or work on the budget for water and sewer. County Manager Roel brought up that Haley and her deputy Caitlin reviewed the water and sewer districts budgets, and there's going to be no, there was no indication to do a rate increase for any of the districts for the upcoming year. Yaws continues to monitor hillside plant. Contract will, with Yaws will terminate at the end of the year. The contract is for $60,000 annually, or $5,000 a month. The following companies responded to RFQ for engineering firms, study on proposed Water and Sewer Authority, Miller Engineers from Manlius, Hunt Engineers from Horseheads, M R B Group from Rochester, C R G from Rochester, Walden Environmental at Hopeville Junction, and A K Strategies from Brooklyn. That's the end of our report.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Hayes. Chairman Hayes. Okay. Next up, Chairman's remarks. Okay, a few of you have talked to me about moving the chairs around a little bit, our desks around, so we're all facing each other like we did back before COVID. I had Mitch and I, or Mitch basically drew this up, a plan on how we can move this around, get us back up on the dais, and we'll be a little bit closer together, then you can see each other, so you won't be turning around or not knowing who's talking and all that stuff. So Mitch is going to even pass this out to you, if you would. You can think about it and get back to us, and we don't need a decision tonight, but...
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I don't like it. Man from Uncle, they had little chairs that would spin around the whole time.
Thanks, Senator.
Dating myself, but hey.
I don't think we need to be six feet apart anymore. We, we have our chairs here. Our chairs aren't six foot apart anymore, so. And we're going to be putting our masks on again, I guess.
Maybe.
Yeah, if we wear the mask, but if people don't, they need to be six feet apart from the rest of us that do. Just saying.
Well, there's room to move, kick somebody out in the second row, maybe.
Yeah.
I heard Mike Ferrara is resigning, so.
True story.
Next up, my, my remarks. Vicki, would you like to make a presentation on updates? Been a while. You know, I was wondering if you could maybe address the mandatory vaccines for the health workers once you, once you get up here? How that might impact Seneca County? An update on the school mandates, on the vaccines, and just asking if you've got any, any update on that?
We'll be here all night talking about all that.
You can have Scott help you too, you know.
Okay. Okay, so I have been sending out the updates, not daily, but I've been sending them back out more frequently as our numbers are going up. As you see, so today alone, we had 19 new cases, and out of those 19, two individuals were fully vaccinated. So we're seeing the majority of our cases are not vaccinated. Some are, some are not, but the majority are not. People in quarantine, we have 301 people right now. It's a lot of people in the county. Five individuals hospitalized, and since last, when we had our surge before, we have had one additional death. As I said, we have five hospitalized. I understand at least one of those individuals is in critical condition. I don't have an update on the others. So they're, the, we are continuing to test three times a week. We've upped our testing to three times a week now because there is an increased demand for that. So we've altered our hours for that. Every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we are doing testing in the office. We're continuing with our COVID vaccine clinics. Certainly, our demand for the clinics is not up right now. We can continue to offer them weekly in our office. At various times, we have the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Sometimes we have, it varies what vaccine we have in stock at the time. We have done some of the extra doses, the third dose for the individuals that are severely chronically compromised, and we are doing those in the office also. Tomorrow, tomorrow's Wednesday, yeah. Tomorrow, we are doing another clinic at the Romulus High School for the 12 to 18-year-olds, and we are also offering Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine for adults. We don't have a lot of people signed up, so if you know anybody who wants it, we will take walk-ins as well as the appointments. I do have some data here that I will share. I've already shared it with the COVID Committee and the Government Odds Committee. Well, I don't think the Government Odds Committee got it, but COVID Committee. So this is some of the data on our numbers. The school testing grant, we, we've met with all the superintendents. We've kind of altered the plans that we have done. We have met with them. We got their plans out to them. We're still working on getting the testing up and going in the schools. They're all kind of doing a different thing, so we're working on that. We're going to be bringing back motions probably at the next meeting to do some hiring of staff to, to conduct those testing in the schools. There'll be a contract for a lab to do the PCR testing, giving the results on that. So we are working on that also. What other update? I'm sorry, I missed something, I know.
Mandatory vaccines for healthcare workers taking effect on September 27th. How's that going to affect Seneca County?
Okay, so as you've probably heard in the news, that the, there is mandatory vaccine for healthcare workers. We talked about it a little bit in the COVID Committee meeting, how it's going to affect the nursing homes, hospitals specifically. All the staff in the hospitals must be vaccinated. They cannot test out as of September 20th. For the county, that affects us and the Health Department. We are in Article 26, 30, in Article 28, which is our Diagnostic and Treatment Center, which is what we give our shots, our clinics through. And we are in Article 36, which is a licensed home care agency. So that means all my employees fall under the mandate that they must get vaccinated, or there is no testing out. They must get vaccinated, or they can no longer work. Dave told us tonight that there has been a lawsuit filed on that. He believes it's just because there's no religious exemption. When they first started talking about that, there was a religious exemption as well as a medical exemption to that. They pulled that religious exemption out, so there is no religious exemption. So from what Dave is telling me, that's what the basis of the, what do you call it?
Well, there was a suit filed in the Northern District, which is Utica, Syracuse. The judge issued a temporary injunction today, and it is limited to the religious exemption. That's what the lawsuit was about, was specifically on the religious exemption. And the state has till the 22nd to respond, and then there'll either be a hearing or further ruling around that time. So there may actually be a ruling prior to the effective date, or it may be shortly delayed, but the, the information that I have says it's going to be expedited.
And Mitch and I meet weekly on this control room that used to be in fit place with the state, and through that, the county executives, county managers of the regional counties, as well as the public health directors, meet every Monday, and we discuss issues. One of the issues we discussed was the potential fallout from that mandate that all care workers do. get vaccinated or they lose their job. Because there's a ripple effect to that. You know, there are healthcare workers that are adamantly refusing. Hospitals, nursing homes have had multiple resignations already. People saying as of September 20th or 27th, whenever the date is, they are done. Because there is no testing out option. There's going to be ripple effect. If you get nursing homes, they lose a lot of staff, they're going to close beds. They close beds, there's no, no nursing home beds. Where are the people going to be? They're going to be in the hospitals. Hospitals are going to fill up with, with patients waiting for nursing homes. They're going to not have enough beds for the severely ill. So there is a ripple effect to that. So the regional, out of the control room, they have written a letter to the governor to request that the healthcare workers have the option to test as opposed to getting vaccinated. I don't know where that's going to go. I'm getting the strong impression that the governor is not going to back down on that. So we will see where that goes. That, that will be interesting. What else? Any questions? Did I answer all your questions? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's all, but I think that's going to be very scary, what's going to happen to the healthcare system in New York today.
It could be. It very, I mean, it has a potential, I mean, especially in the larger counties, it has a potential to be very, very significant.
Thompson already said they're going to have 500 openings. They aren't going, they're going to shut down wards. I mean, they've already shut down parts of, up in Syracuse, they had to shut down deliveries. They aren't doing new deliveries anymore. So pretty soon people are going to start dying because of the mandate. I guess that's what the governor wants, that's what the governor gets, just as bad as the last one.
Well, the problem is you couple, you couple that, the people that aren't going to get vaccinated with the people that then get exposed and then have to mandatorily quarantine. So they're, you got the healthcare workers are not going to get vaccinated, so they leave their job. And then you've got the healthcare workers that are still working but getting sick and going out on quarantine. And it, it's a huge, huge, huge challenge.
But to your point, I think Governor Cuomo was the one that, that started that, right? Wasn't he the one that passed that?
But if she doesn't back down, that makes it complicit.
Oh, I think, I think that she would back down, but I guess not.
The death rate just goes higher.
Yep. Okay, any questions for Vicki?
I am going to pass out, I forgot to do this at the beginning of the meeting, so I will pass out some data that I shared with the COVID Committee earlier.
And can I say, I guess this is your last meeting?
This will be my last meeting unless I decide to listen in on the October meeting, but this will be my last meeting.
Yeah, I want to thank you for all your 30 years of service. I think it was 30 years, right?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And one, and one more thing. You had a luncheon today for all your volunteers.
I'm sorry. I should mention that and I apologize. We, the Health Department had a luncheon today. We invited everybody that's volunteered for us through the COVID campaign for all of our clinics and the testing and the contact tracing that we've done and the people that we've had in the office just doing copying and pasting and collating data for us. So we invited everybody that's volunteered for us and we had a very nice luncheon today. We held it at the office for the aging. Like Joe Supervisor Borst was there, Mitch was there representing the county also. So I think it was a very good turnout, a very nice luncheon and I think people appreciated it. And I just told them that was kind of our bribe to keep them on the hook because we're going to need them again in the future. But yeah, it was very nice. Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, well, we're, do we have to talk about this information or are you just handing it out?
I'm handing it out and we can talk about it now or we can wait until, until the resolution comes up. So talk about the resolution comes up.
Deals with the government op.
That'll probably be at the end Supervisor. I don't think it's in the packet. That'll probably be at the end.
Okay, let's move on and do the county manager's remarks.
First, I'd like to report to the board and those listening at home that preparation work on the 2022 Sonica County budget is ongoing. The department submissions have been completed, have some departmental one-on-ones over the next week or so. Plan to do a formal briefing to the Finance Committee at the September 28th committee meeting. At this point, looking probably at filing the tentative budget with the board in mid-October, which would give the board up to two months to consider the budget before the legal requirement of December 15th to adopt. Related to that, to the members of the Special Committees on Facilities, Fleet and American Recovery Act, we are going to need to meet sometime over the next three to four weeks tops. There are fleet and facility implications in the budget. I think it would be helpful to have some feedback from those special committees. Similarly, the Recovery Act Committee talking about some possible financial support to some capital projects that may also be a part of the budget. So I will be reaching out to the members of those three committees in the near future to try to gauge some availability. We'll try to do it at a date and time that works best for the most. But it is time and important that we convene those three special committees before final budget decisions are made. So that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next up, county attorney remarks.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. We will be addressing out of the resolution for the septic inspection law. They're be asking the board to consider a couple of amendments. They're most, they're administrative or, or not technical, but we wanted to clean up a little bit of the wording on that. Then also, it's anticipated that at the end of the meeting under new business, there'll be a Rule 29 act request to address a opioid settlement, again, that has a short time fuse. I briefed, it's been, the resolution is in your packet. Tried to be as straightforward as I could and it's for one of the, this is the second largest of the opioid defendants that is, has their case being heard in bankruptcy, which makes it a little bit procedurally different. And I'll have a couple of other topics to address, probably at the October meeting as we come towards the end of the year, but thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Thank you, county attorney. Next up, communications.
Communications number 91 through 100 have been received and filed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Next up is resolutions and motions. Turn off with finance, number 14 Supervisor Reynolds.
Thank you Chairman Heisen. Sonica County Board of Supervisors to adopt county equalization rates for 2022, the county tax apportionment prior, prior to November 15th of 2021.
You've got a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay, number 15.
Board of Supervisors authorizes amendments to 2021 Sonica County budget.
Support.
Second there, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Okay, thank you Supervisor Reynolds. Next up Supervisor Enzlo, Mental Health Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors approve Janice Kramer contract amendment.
Support. You've got a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Mental Health Services, thank you. Next up, Public Works, number 17 Supervisor Trout.
Contract with Unified Court System for Cleaning and Minor Repairs.
Support.
Second there, okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Number 18.
Supervisors authorize Sonica County Courthouse dome coating.
Support.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Number 19.
Request Proposals for Professional Engineering Services for Sonica County Solid Waste Management Plan.
Support.
Got a second there, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Number 20.
Request Proposals for Professional Engineering Services for Sonica County.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Thank you Supervisor Trout. Next up, Environmental Affairs, Resolution number 21 Supervisor Cronenwater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A resolution to introduce proposed Local Law G of 2021, a local law to establish a septic system inspection program requiring periodic routine inspections of onsite wastewater treatment systems, septic systems, and inspections at the time of property transfer and advertised for public hearing. Support. A second on that, any discussion?
Mr. Cronenwater, we do need to make an amendment, please.
The amendment on this would be, the public hearing would be on October 12th and that's at our Ovid.
Yes, sir.
Meeting.
And additionally, we would ask that the board consider amending the title of the, first of all, the title of the resolution by striking the second and third lines and the first word of the, of the last line and simply say a local law to establish a watershed protection law. And that in the body of the law itself, that on page three, we add the, after its county local law, which would be G or whatever number is finally apportioned, that it would add the word watershed, add the phrase watershed protection clause. We'd based upon review of the document, we're asking those amendments to be made.
I second the amendment.
Um, excuse me? And also the location?
I'm sorry.
Also the location?
Yes, I'm sorry. Pardon, which one?
The first, the second resolved?
I'm sorry, and the second resolved would also address it as the watershed protection law.
No, no, I'm saying.
Set the Ovid meeting, October 12th.
He said the Ovid meeting in October.
Okay, just change it.
Yes.
Okay. I thought you just said October 12th.
And we'll have a copy of that by then? You got, you have?
Yeah, it, it, we basically already pretty much have it. We just need to.
You said on page three, it's three pages?
It's paid, there's, there's page three of the actual local law.
Oh, okay. So we haven't seen that yet.
That was available, but it's not a copy, it's not attached. It simply adds that as a phrase.
Okay. Okay, so you had a motion on the amendment, you had a second on the amendment, so any discussion on the amendment?
So this is, excuse me, I wasn't at the last meeting, so this, we've expanded it from just doing a lakefront to doing the entire county now, or is this upper discussion?
It's a, it's a rolling five-year inspection. It starts, you know, we basically work the large town, small town, and then it'll, they'll complete the entire town, was the county over? And your, Scott can finish that up.
More to refresh our memories.
Over is first, Joe. Yeah, we thought you'd like that, sir.
Oh, great. You weren't here to object.
So yes, there was discussion at the committee meeting that it be expanded from lakefront and property transfers to the whole county. I think there were some different reasons expressed for that. First, I had trouble getting a schedule together because I think initially when we discussed this kind of broadly, it was expressed that we'd do the lakes first and then come back later and incorporate the rest of the county. And trying to set up a testing schedule for just the lakes and then coming back and doing the rest of the county and incorporating that at a later date, that just wasn't feasible. The schedule just wasn't working. And then there were some, some other issues that were, were brought up, I think. One, we'll pick up probably hundreds of septic systems that are in close proximity to ditches and streams throughout the county. Of course, ditches go to streams and streams go to lakes. Will also serve to protect the canal too. Canal wasn't initially part of the discussion. It'll also protect individual water supply wells. You know, I, you know, it's, I hear the argument sometimes why if I live in the middle of nowhere, do I need to inspect my septic system? I don't live next to the lake. But those folks also have water supply wells. Their neighbors have water supply wells. And so the discussion was brought forth and came out that we thought we would do the whole county. Schedule was put into the proposed law to do two towns at a time on a, since we have 10 towns. It would be a five-year rotational basis for routine inspections. They're a little less stringent as far as how much water is run and so forth to test the septic system than a property transfer inspection, which is a little more involved. More water is run and that's intended, intended to protect the buyers from getting a bum septic system. Okay. And this is just to hold the public hearing, it's not to approve the actual law?
Correct. This is, this is to set the public hearing, your comment, and then it would be, that would be the, the voting on the actual law would come up after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd also like to mention that we also got a grant for $250,000 to help individuals that their septic tanks need work on. We have money to help them out.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, that grant, the first time this county got that grant was for both Cuyahoga and Sonica Lakes. DEC was going to take both lakes away from us. Myself, along with the Directors of Environmental Health and Tompkins and Cuyahoga County, wrote the DEC to advocate for keeping those lakes in the program. We had, we had conferences with representatives from the DEC. We were able to basically save Cuyahoga Lake for the program, so that money is only for folks that either live on Cuyahoga Lake or within 250 feet of Cuyahoga Lake this time around. That program is continuing once the round two funding is spent. They're saying there'll be a round three, but round, took a lot longer to get to round two than we initially thought when they gave us round one. I was in Cuyahoga County for round one and we thought, well, we spend our money and they give us round two. And as with lots of things with the state, didn't quite pan out that way. Took a lot longer to get to round two. We finally made it there. And like I say, it's Cuyahoga Lake only this time, but perhaps in the future we could get other water bodies. Maybe we could get Sonica Lake back in the program, maybe the canal, something like that. I don't know. We're spending, we've already spent a fair amount of that, $250,000, probably 40% of it, I would estimate off the top of my head, recouping homeowners for replacing and repairing their septic systems. Is there any programs out there for people not along the lake right now, or do you anticipate anything? Not, well, there's the Bishop Sheen Ecu Medical Housing Foundation, which does help low-income folks to, and you can, folks who qualify for that, obviously you have to be income eligible. I mean, those monies are available, not just for replacing septic systems, but if your furnace goes or your roof is shot or those types of things, they give out low-interest loans or sometimes grants. Sometimes it's 60, 40 programs. Maybe the homeowner has to come up with 40% and they give you 60%, that type of thing. They're available. Beyond that, I'm not aware of any other large-scale programs to assist homeowners with septic system replacement. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amended resolution? The amendments on the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
No.
Boy, I better have a roll call on the amendment.
Okay.
Heard a lot of no's there.
There are. So Paul Cronenwater, Supervisor Cronenwater, move the amendment. I did not hear who seconded it.
Mr. Ferrara.
I second the amendment.
Thank you. Supervisor Cronenwater?
Yes.
Supervisor Ferrara?
Yes.
Supervisor Reynolds? Supervisor Garlic Lorenzetti?
Yes.
Supervisor Brownell?
No.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Yes.
Supervisor Borst?
No.
Supervisor Hayes?
Yes.
Supervisor Lot?
Yes.
Supervisor McGreevy?
No.
Supervisor Heisen?
Oh, yes.
Supervisor Trout?
No.
Supervisor Clear?
No.
Supervisor Enzlo?
No.
Seven to seven.
I'm sorry, sir. Let me go ahead. The, the motion passed, 422 ayes, 328 nays. You want me to double check it?
I couldn't understand you.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion passed with 422 ayes and 328 nays.
Really? You sure?
No, I couldn't, do it again.
I counted seven to seven.
Yeah, but that's, we rated it, it's your weighted vote.
Yeah, your weighted vote. It probably.
Seven to seven, sir.
Do it again.
I can do it again.
Run it back.
And I'll let you know if anybody changes. Supervisor Cronenwater?
Yes.
Supervisor Ferrara?
Yes.
Supervisor Reynolds?
No.
Supervisor Garlic Lorenzetti?
Yes.
Supervisor Brownell?
No.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Yes.
Supervisor Borst?
No.
Supervisor Hayes?
Yes.
Supervisor Cronenwater?
I get to vote twice? Cool.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I always do that. I know. Supervisor Lot?
Yes.
Supervisor McGreevy?
No.
No.
Supervisor Heisen?
Yes.
Supervisor Trout?
No.
Supervisor Clear?
No.
Supervisor Enzlow?
No.
The vote stands, 422 ayes, 328 nays.
Okay, the amendment is defeated, so now we gotta go back and vote on the resolution.
Amendment passed.
No, it passed.
Oh, it passed, excuse me, I'm sorry. I was thinking last night, last week. Okay, it passed, so okay, now we're gonna have a vote on the resolution as amended, so, any discussion on that now? Okay.
Change it back to the lake.
What?
Change it back to just the lake, instead of the whole county. I'll vote for it then.
I agree.
If it stands right now, I'm voting no.
I agree.
Start with the lake and then work our way out.
Is that your, another amendment then?
No, that's my discussion. I'm gonna vote no on this resolution right now.
But you'd vote yes if it was just the lake?
If it was just the lake, I'd vote yes, but the way it stands right now?
Lake and the canal?
Absolutely not.
You put the canal back in it?
You can put the canal in it, my canal's got a sewer line down through it, so it doesn't apply there.
It falls probably.
So, does anybody want to change the resolution?
I mean, how about major streams and tributaries?
That covers.
I'm sure you can change the resolution, you gotta have, you gotta make a motion for an amendment to the resolution.
Well, that's what I mean, does anybody want to make?
Okay.
I don't know.
Try it in one area around the lakes, and then work our way out as it goes to see if.
All right, just somebody make a motion then, and you can.
I'll make a motion, then we change it to the lakes.
There you go, then get a second.
Now, I can't.
Define the lake, what the lakes look like.
And then you can have a discussion.
Define the lakes and the water tributaries that you want it to apply to.
Give me Matt. All the lakefront properties.
How are you gonna define the lakefront property?
Anything that has lakefront property.
2,000 feet off the lake.
There you go.
Anything that has waterfront associated with the property.
Half a mile.
Yeah, not 2,000.
No, that's good, that's good, let it go, let it go.
Lakefront's half a mile. Okay, let's wait Scott's here.
Well, you know, if you want to go back to the lakes, I know that's where we started. I think originally, we talked about doing properties that either bordered or were located within 250 feet of Keoga and Seneca Lake.
Yes.
Maybe you want to add in the canal, you know, if that's what this board wants to do, then we could take another look at that, that's, but I would, 1,000 feet from the lake, I mean, they, I would, I would recommend staying at either 250 or 500 feet.
What about properties that just had lake frontage? Because usually most, in my experience, on both the lakes, most of the properties that have lake frontage are within that 250 or greater.
Well, it gets a little complicated, because of course, a lot of people buy that tiny little right-of-way, they live on, you know, the other side of the road, and they buy that little strip, their septic system might be 1,000 feet from the lake, but they buy that little piece of lake access so that they can get down to the lake and have a dock, and have a boat, and so forth, so I'd say all, all properties with septic systems.
But then you could, you could look at it the other way, too, it could go the other way, whereas if you have a big piece of property, and they're 500 feet off the lake, and they have their house, their septic system, they say, well, we're, Mr. King, we're not, we don't fall within that 250 feet.
Right.
But they have a septic system on the lake, so.
Right, so.
Guess what's everybody's pleasure?
If the parcel was 500 feet deep all the way to the lake, then he would, he would be in a.
Well, just send it back to committee.
Does it really matter if it's 500 feet or 2,000 feet? Isn't it all the same watershed? And isn't there all water, streams and so forth that eventually end to the, end to the lake? I really, you know, I mean, that, it's all the watershed, and you have, everybody who has a septic tank should be treated the same way. I don't mind.
I agree.
I will say, when I looked at the stream map for the county, especially in the southern half of the county, there are so many streams in this county that, you know, because there was some discussion in committee about, well, maybe we, maybe do the waterfront properties, and then we add in properties that have a septic system that border a stream. When I started looking at that and zoomed in, more than 50% of the parcels had a stream that ran through them, so that's when I said, well, geez, if we're gonna do lakefront and those properties that have a stream that run through them and have a septic system or beyond 50% of the parcels, we might as well do 100% of the parcels, so it's fair and equitable, I think that's kind of the way that discussion went. I'd like to think, treat everybody the same, but apparently, the, the state isn't, when they do their grants, they're just giving grants to people along the lakes, that's where they really assume that's the problem, and that's where they're willing to shell out their money, so we start there, and then we, we work our way from there, is the way I feel.
I agree, because I, my fear is that we start so big, do the whole county, you and your department, your staff is gonna be overwhelmed with this, it's gonna consume more of your time than you think, and I just, I would like to start small.
You have.
And go to the focus points along the lake, and then work our way out, maybe see, after a year of doing this, bring it back to the board and say, hey, it's working good, everything's flawless, now let's go to 1,000 feet, or the whole county at that point, but it's a, it's a new chartered, uncharted territory for you and your department to take on, and I just don't want to see anybody that's overworked in one area, and then forgets about their daily duties in the other, and then there's complaints and issues.
Well, we said we're gonna be hiring inspectors and training them.
Yes, 20 years' experience, it's not new to him.
Then the resident had to pay. Yeah, we weren't gonna hire anybody.
Right.
Right, well.
Well, we're training, we're gonna train.
I think when we very first discussed, that's, that it can grow to be a larger program, and I might say in the next year, come to the board and say, you know, I need an extra staff person to handle the paperwork in-house, that type of thing. I don't, I think I could do it with the existing staff initially.
But this way, you'd get your feet wet with it and see what's really involved?
As far as managing the program, I mean, I have, you know, in Keoga County, worked directly in the program for many years prior to coming here and help manage the program there and so forth. It can, it does grow to be a fairly sizable program, but there are also benefits to that, accumulating the information on, I think, like we discussed previously, you know, folks don't have any record of their septic, they don't even know where their septic tank is or whatnot, you get that trained inspector out there who then not only inspects the system to make sure it's working okay, but they also generate a map when they do that, and then that's filed with the county. If nobody else keeps track of that, we keep track of it in our, you know, filing cabinet and so forth over there, so in eight years, when somebody wants to sell the place, geez, where's the septic system? Hopefully, the county has a record by that point in time, because hopefully, the system has been inspected.
Yeah, because I get a lot of that in my office, where's my septic? And I always send them to you.
Sure, and sometimes we have records, and sometimes we don't, depends on when the system went in, especially older systems, 60s and 70s, folks weren't as compliant about, you know, filing that paperwork with the health department there nowadays, so it's spotty.
Kyle, I know, if my sewer line breaks, I can't come up to the county and get a handout, or from the state, I gotta repair my sewer line. So if my septic tank's not working, too bad, fix it.
The thing is, it's a seven, seven vote here, so it's gonna be very contentious if we pass it, which you have enough votes to pass it, but if you can make it more appeasing to everybody, then it won't be so bad.
Why would we put off promoting lake health for five more years? Why are we exempting 80, 90%, if not more, of our residents?
Kyle, wait, wait, wait.
Sorry about that.
Bernie had his hand up, and then.
I'd like to make a motion, we put this back to committee, get some more thought into this, some kind of a cost. We're rushing this through without knowing, what is, any idea what the costs or anything are?
So I can say that.
I mean, we don't, we didn't do this any other time, you, you know, you've been in one meeting, and now this meeting, I think some more thought should be put in, some more.
I agree, I mean. The cost to the property owners has not been sufficiently identified. This appears to be just yet another tax on the homeowners and property owners in this county. Have we thought about outhouses? Are they going to be addressed? The bulk of the Amish folks in this county don't have a septic system, is that going to be addressed? What about compost toilets? There's a whole number of questions that aren't addressed in this law. I agree with Supervisor Brownell, we need more time to look at this, before rushing this through.
So, and the committee, yeah, excuse me, the committee did ask for information on costs, and we found by querying 10 certified inspectors in, in Keoga County, that the average cost of a routine septic system inspection was $80.25. Over there, they have a little different schedule, depends on where you live, it's much more complicated than what's proposed here, once every five years. There, if you live on Owosco Lake, it's once every other year. If you live within 500 feet of the lake, it's once every three years. If you live in the Owosco Lake watershed, or Little Soda Spay watershed up by Fairhaven, it's once every five years. If you live somewhere else, in the Boondocks, it's once every seven years. We tried to do something more simple here, everybody, once every five years, that routine inspection, that's maybe somewhere in the 80 to $100 range. And then the property transfer inspections, those are a little bit more, because they take a little bit more time, and there's a requirement to pump the tank at the end. But I think the committee kind of looked at that as, with so many inspections and so forth that happen at a time of a property transfer, assuring a buyer-to-be that the septic system is in good condition is, was a reasonable cost.
Let's unwind this, we started off with your motion, we never got a second, I think, to, how many, you, problem was how many feet away from the lake it had to be?
The state grant that's available.
The motion's passed.
For footage.
What's that?
Sorry, the state grant that's available, what do they spell out for footage?
For footage, as far, anybody within, that borders Keoga Lake or within 250 feet, the septic system has to be within 250 feet of the lake. That's the first.
That's what, that's, I'm sorry, excuse me, that's.
The repair and replacement, just for Keoga Lake, yep.
So it's.
It's a statewide program, we only have it for Keoga.
250 feet and/or waterfront properties?
Right, properties that are, most of the time, it's awarded to properties that are bordering the lake. Occasionally, there's a property that's.
So that would be a way of clearing up the, whether it's lakefront or not, the 250 foot and/or lakefront properties?
If you wanted to go that route, you could do the 250 feet, sure.
So that's your amendment now?
I.
If I could, please.
Wait, wait, I'm just, let it finish.
So that, that would be my amendment, 250 feet and/or waterfront properties?
Only.
Only.
What about on transfer?
All properties in the county on transfer?
Yes.
And all properties on transfer?
Yep. Isn't that the way it is now?
Not, it, if you're selling a property that's involving typically a, the standard MLRS contract requires it.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't necessarily require, at least this would, your issue is, is there's no real standard, and this would allow the county to have a standard just like Keoga County has.
You can buy properties as-is without a septic inspection, and we already have septic inspectors coming into this county from outside this county, there's no baseline as to what they have to do for a septic inspection, so if I want to go inspect, you know, Joe's house or whatever, and I convince the homeowner that running 20 gallons of water per bedroom and no requirement to pump the tank, and I'm there 45 minutes, that's a septic inspection, if I can sell that to them, and the realtors are okay with it, and the attorneys, they don't know, you know, I mean, they're not septic experts, they're experts at what they do, but if they see a report, passed a septic inspection, well, great, everybody moves on with the property transfer. Was that a really good, stringent inspection of that septic system? Probably not, but then you have folks far on the other end, running cameras down pipes, doing those types of things, pumping out the tank, charging hundreds of dollars to the homeowner for an inspection, and telling those same attorneys for a property transfer, septic, septic's okay. They might, both inspectors test the same system, one would have it pass, one would have it fail, this would set a baseline of what we expect and what we require for these property transfer inspections, so if inspector comes in from Keoga County, or Tompkins, or wherever, to do an inspection in this county, they have to follow, follow our protocol that we set. It's a minimum set of standards establishes a baseline for the realtors, for the attorneys, for the buyers, for the sellers, so everybody knows what to expect at the end of the day. I think that's part of the reason it's important to have a property transfer inspection as part of the law.
I've never bought or sold a house without doing one. That's, I didn't even realize that was a thing that you could get around that.
And Scott?
Mortgage, you don't you.
With, with that, with a part that's in, in transfer, so if any property's in transfer, your department will, we may have talked about this before, your pro, your department monitors the property transfers, or?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna work with, you know, the way we did it in Keoga County was we worked with clerk's office, get a monthly report on property transfers, and we'd sift through those, and, you know, some of them are arms-length transfers, or, you know, they might be between the parents and the children, that type of thing, we don't require a property transfer right-of-way on that, so maybe the next time the town was due, there'd be a property transfer. If we switched to just doing the lakes and property transfers, that would be, have to be a discussion we'd have, would we require a property transfer for generational transfer? For mom and dad, you know, I want to pass my house on to my kids, but maybe retain lifetime use, we, we incorporate that property transfer and require that then or not? If we don't, that system may never get inspected, because the kids might live there for the next 40 years, so I would recommend we, we have that, but that'd be a discussion to have if we're gonna go.
That would be after, that would be after the fact that the property actually transferred, so you have no.
Yeah, so that would be kind of catching up an inspection after the fact, but those are usually less contentious, because they're all in the family, I mean, once in a while. I've seen things get a little dicey, but usually those are, really, when you have an, I guess you'd call it an arms-length transfer between parties that aren't affiliated with each other, that's when you want to be especially careful, that's when those inspectors would follow that protocol that I was talking about, submit that to us, we'd review it, make sure they ran the minimum water, they did things in the right order, did the inspection first, and then pumped the tank afterwards, because if you pump the tank first, it's easy to run water into an empty tank, and your septic system passes inspection. So, you know, there's things written into the law, 30 days, you know, if you pump your tank, you got, in an occupied house, you gotta wait 30 days before you can do that inspection, so it can get back to normal operating conditions, so you can't cheat the inspection. Those are all built into the testing protocol and into the law.
Okay, so you got the motion, amendment, you got a motion, now we need a second, or else, or else it's gonna die. What?
We're gonna need to go back and, and redraw.
Motion passed, did anybody forget that?
I know.
No, that was the amendment passed.
No, the motion actually did pass in the beginning, he's correct, but.
No, we did, we were voting on the amendment that.
No, the.
Paul made, there was a change, it was a change that Paul made, and Mike seconded it, so the amendment, that's as far.
What did we vote on that was 422 and 338?
The amendment.
We haven't voted on the resolution.
Okay, thank you, very good.
Jim wanted to add an amendment to the resolution, the standing resolution now.
Okay.
We're looking for a second, if not, I'm gonna let Kyle speak.
John Trout.
Dan seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, now we can discuss, we're on discussion of the, another amendment here. Kyle, you want to speak now?
Mr. King, the Kewa County policy, is that 250, or is that lakeside properties only, or is that all properties in the county?
Well, ironically, that started out as a discussion of just doing the lakes. My understanding, I wasn't there back in 1991 or two or so when it was passed, but it started out as a proposal to do the lakes, and it grew into a countywide watershed, that's a watershed regulation as opposed to a local law, but similar.
And I'm sorry to ask for.
They do the whole county.
I'm sorry to ask for this sort of data on the spot, but can you ballpark, is it mostly lakeside customer, residents that are in violation? Or is it mostly folks up, non-lakeside? You have any idea of what that ratio might be?
Runs the gamut. I think the average failure rate, off the top of my head, ran about, in recent years, ran about maybe 3% a year, systems that would fail. So 97% pass. Early in the program, some of the septic contractors got pretty busy. It was recounted to me by one of my former colleagues who was there when that regulation was initially passed, that when folks got their letters in the spring, they kind of knew that their system maybe hadn't been working. So what they do, instead of, what they did was they called the contractor and said, hey, could you come out and take a look at my system? Maybe get an engineer involved and get the thing fixed. And by the way, if somebody replaces a septic system, they get a free pass on the next routine inspection. Because if you just put that system in this year and your town's due next year, it ought to be working as brand new. If it's not, you better call the contractor, not the health department. So we build things like that into the program as well.
But do you have recollection of your team or if the Kewa County team was spending more time lakeside or more time up in the hills, if you will?
As far as review of replacement systems when they come in, they take a little longer for lakefront, because we're extra careful. Oftentimes, the lake is, you know, so heavily developed that there's small footprints to squeeze those replacement systems in, so they take a little more on the review end. As far as the inspection program itself, though, an inspection report's an inspection report when it comes in, passes or fails, doesn't take any longer to review a lakefront inspection than.
There's failures everywhere, basically.
Correct, there's failures everywhere.
Okay, any more discussion then on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Okay, roll call. On the amendment.
Which amendment is this, Mr. Chairman?
I have a question though, before I vote. So the 250 feet, and then we're gonna target the lake, both lakes, and then we'll work into the rest of the county, correct?
And all sales, and all property sales.
And all property sales, but then it will incorporate the rest of the county as time goes on, correct?
If this be up to the board.
The lakes.
Start with the lakes, okay.
And all property sales inside the county.
That's fine.
Bless you. What about after the five years that we start with the lakes, would we go to a full countywide program?
We could look at, revisit it next year.
Revisit it.
Do it next year.
I'm good.
I'm just afraid this is gonna involve into something that's gonna be so big for Mr. King and his department to maintain, and the complaining and everything that goes along with it, that it's gonna be, we're gonna have to jump into hiring more personnel, more staff to monitor this and do this.
And Mr. King has told us that he only anticipates having to hire one additional person. We're not doing the inspections, we're just simply reviewing.
I, I, I will change my vote, only for the fact that I would like to target and prioritize the lakes first. And if you're gonna go town to town, that could take a while before you get to all the lake shores.
I would.
Trout?
Yeah, it's not, you know, we discussed at the first meeting, originally, I proposed just doing the lakes.
Yeah.
The Airbnbs are what bother me, when these cottages have a single-family septic system, and now you have 20 people in that house every week, you know?
Not for anything, I will add again, that if you go on and look at the Bayat, what we've adopted in our town for vacation rentals, they have to have a septic inspection if they're gonna vacation rental, and going by the size of the septic, and the amount, how big the square footage is, is how many people they can have. So that would answer that question, but go ahead. I just want to remind you all that, it's already there.
Okay, we're really getting out of rules.
Not really, it's part of it, that's part of it. But yeah, I'm fine if they do with the lakes.
So, let's go back to the roll call. Okay, Margaret, try that again.
This is, yeah, now, make clear what we're voting on.
This is the clear amendment.
This is the clear amendment, 250 feet from the lake.
And/or waterfront.
Yeah.
See, it's not clear, that's why we should table it.
Any, any properties bordering or within 250 feet of the lake.
There you go, and all property transfers inside the county.
And all property. Okay.
Okay.
Try that again, Margaret.
All right, Supervisor Clear.
You.
You take, you take the mask off to say that, or?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Clear.
Uh, yes.
Supervisor Trout?
Yes.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Yes.
Supervisor Garlic Lawrence Eddy?
Yes.
Supervisor Brownell?
No.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Yes.
Supervisor Borst?
Yes.
Supervisor Hayes?
Yes.
Supervisor Ferrara?
No.
Supervisor Cronenwetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Lot?
Yes.
Supervisor McGreevy?
No.
Supervisor Heisen?
Yes.
Supervisor Enzlo?
No.
All right, the motion passes with 569 ayes and 181 nays.
Okay.
Now, the resolution.
Any more discussion?
Not what I had in mind, but better than nothing.
There you go, Trout.
Gotta have the resolution now, right?
Send it back to the committee, that's what I was. More discussion.
No more discussion.
Somebody could yell that out and.
The call, the wording is call the question.
Call the question, but nobody else wants to discuss anymore, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
This is the resolution?
This is the resolution as amended, and it's got two amendments on it, it's got amendments from.
Administrative, right.
Administrative from Paul, and then the second amendment from Mr. Clear. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, roll call.
Supervisor Cronenwetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Trout?
Yes.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Yes.
Supervisor Garlic Lawrence Eddy?
Yes.
Supervisor Brownell?
No.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Yes.
Supervisor Borst?
Yes.
Supervisor Hayes?
Yes.
Supervisor Ferrara?
No.
Supervisor Lot?
Yes.
Supervisor McGreevy?
No.
Supervisor Heisen?
Yes.
Supervisor Clear?
Yes.
Supervisor Enzlo?
No.
The motion passed with 569 ayes and 181 nays.
Okay, well, that's a little bit better, 10 to 4, so it's not so controversial, but it's a, it's a good start.
Maybe next year we can stop doing inspections on buildings every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like drinking everybody, so.
No more inspection on businesses next year.
We weren't doing, we weren't.
No more $350 fees anymore for inspections, let's get rid of them.
We weren't doing inspections on septic systems, at least we're doing inspections now at 250 feet back. And on, and on our property transfers, that's better than nothing, Mike.
It is.
Progress, seems like you're a progressive-type guy, you would, you would have voted for it. Anyway, where were we on this? Paul, this is resolution 21, now we're back to government operations number 22, Supervisor Garlic Lawrence Eddy.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Chairman. Amend the rules to the, hold the board meeting in Ovid on October 12, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the Papa Bear Building.
Support. The second there, okay, any discussion? I talked to the owner of the Golden Buck, and he will be available for, if you need some food down there. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Supervisor Garlic Lawrence Eddy, numbers, oh, she's got a second one here.
I'm still here. Contract to accept technology innovation and election resource grant for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Support.
Second there, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 24.
Contract to accept early voting expansion grant program for Seneca County Board of Elections.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, thank you.
So, do I do my?
You can do that right now, because you did have a meeting before the meeting.
Correct, so let's not all forget here how we compromised, just on the last one. That being said.
I wear a half a mask.
That being said, boys, to consider, government ops would like this board, and I'd like a roll call vote, please, Margaret, to consider re-implementing a universal mask policy for all county buildings.
Support.
Who was the second? Mr. Barnhart, okay.
Well.
Yeah, okay, any discussion on this?
I hope not, let's look at the numbers.
I have a discussion. So.
Speak into your microphone a little closer.
The question, the, the discussion I have is, so there's enough people that warrant the buildings in Seneca County, that frequent the buildings, to make a difference. It seems to me that what we've done in the past with the state and the federal government mandating masks for everybody to wear, it seems that, to them, it's not necessary, yet we feel that we know more than the other medical directors and all the others, the state of New York and federal government, and Dr. Fauci and all these people that aren't telling everybody to do it nationally again. I mean, so I don't see the need to put our workers into a situation that some of them reported, told me, that they would just assume not do it anymore, they're tired of it.
Okay.
It's okay, once they leave the building, to not do it, but it's not okay when they're at work. It does, it's a double standard. Either we make it for everybody and every store, because there's a lot more traffic, I'm sure, at a local restaurant than there is at the Seneca County buildings.
Well, but we're just trying to take care of the county, the county building.
We're taking.
I have a question, is this resolution gonna be, you all wear a mask, even if you're vaccinated? This would be 100%, masking?
Okay.
Okay, so you're all know, you're all aware of that, okay, Kyle, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just want to counter Dave by saying, you know, I'm looking around this room at a lot of county employees, and just about every single one of them is masked. We heard from the personnel, that's correct, we heard from the Personnel Director last month, who said that he received zero complaints about the previous mask policy, the same one that we're trying to implement. And we already have multiple departments inside this building that have implemented their own mask mandate outside of our supervision. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't re-implement this to protect the health of our staff and our employees. Mind you, 1 in 13 Seneca County residents have gotten COVID so far, 1 in 13. So it's paramount to protect our own employee safety, if not the public's.
Okay, Cindy, he was, had his hand up.
Kyle pretty much said it all. I would like to say to Dave, though, David, look at the numbers that Vicki passed out, those aren't fake numbers, those are actual numbers. And it will show you that we are definitely going way, way up again. So I don't understand why everybody.
Well, I guess the question is, Cindy, is, are those people that are being infected, are they getting it from Seneca County office buildings and grounds? If they're not getting it from here.
How the hell you think you're gonna tag on to that?
I don't know, because do we not have contact tracers anymore?
You know what, I argued, I argued all through COVID committee, and the committee came back to the board, and they are supporting it. And take, like he said, look at your county employees over at that table, every one of them are masked.
And that's the.
Yeah, call the question.
And you know what? Most of the time up until tonight, most of them didn't have masks on when they came here.
Oh, yes, they did.
Mr. Hey.
Now all of a sudden you do. You didn't have a mask on most of the time until tonight, you decided to wear one tonight.
I wore a mask two weeks ago, because the numbers are going up, call the question.
Oh, yes, I know.
Call the question.
Yep, call the question.
Dave, you know what happens if a county employee has to quarantine for 10 days or 14 days?
Yeah, the county employee stays home.
And do you know who fits the bill?
Yes, the same one that we do, the county.
County does, they don't have to use any.
Same way where every company does the same thing.
They don't have to use their sick time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, or their vacation time?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure.
If they get sick, whether they got a mask on or not, and they still get sick?
Correct.
Because they don't wear it when they're outside of work, what does that do?
That means.
Say, well, you didn't wear it at work, so outside of work, so.
You're trying, everybody will, everybody will agree that people who are vaccinated still can get COVID-19.
I'm not saying that.
But the, the, the probability, the math, is a lot less than not.
What, what, because they're, with the mask on?
With the mask on.
Okay, did I hear a call the question? Okay, I recognize Cindy for calling the question there.
Second.
Okay. You know, you only need a one.
No, it's just a call the question.
Now you, now we, we vote now to call the question, if you've had enough support to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question say aye?
Aye.
Nays?
You have closure.
We have closure, now it's time for the vote.
A roll call vote, thank you.
Well, we gotta first see it, maybe it'll be unanimous.
You're gonna need a roll call.
And you two have a divided belief in the Easter Bunny.
Oh, yeah.
We can only hope.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Supervisor Garlic Lawrence Eddy?
You take your mask off, Margaret?
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Garlic Lawrence Eddy?
Yes.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Yes.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Yes.
Supervisor Brownell?
No.
Supervisor Borst?
No.
Supervisor Hayes?
Nope.
Supervisor Ferrara?
Yes.
Supervisor Cronenwetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Lot?
Yes.
Supervisor McGreevy?
No.
Supervisor Heisen?
Yes.
Supervisor Trout?
No.
Supervisor Clear?
No.
Supervisor Enzlo?
No.
The motion passes, 519 ayes, 331 nays.
That's exactly what I had, tag that vote right. Thanks for all the compromising too, guys.
Okay, 519, the motion passes then.
419, sir.
419.
That's a lot of numbers.
That was a compromise, Cindy. Not debating it.
Okay.
We debated.
Now we're done with, uh, done with government operation, thank you Supervisor Lawrence Eddy, garlic.
When does that go into effect?
Immediately.
Immediately.
Immediately. I guess we gotta go then, because I don't have a mask on.
I can bring some over from my office, if you'd like.
I guess I gotta go. Andy standing outside the door, nothing.
Okay, number supervisors, Public Safety number 25, Supervisor Brunel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, contact extension for public, excuse me, Public Defense Case Management System Maintenance and Software Support for the New York State Defenders Association Incorporated.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Supervisor Brunel. Next up, Technology number 26, Supervisor Claire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors authorized the purchase of Microsoft Office 365.
Support.
Second there, okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you, Supervisor Claire. Next up, Personnel, Supervisor Farrar, Resolution number 27.
Authorized reclassification of one full-time human resource assistant to personal, Personnel Technician Trainee.
Support.
Seconds there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 28.
Supervise authorized contract with Romer and Wallens LLP for legal services.
Support.
Got a second there, okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We're all done there, thank you Supervisor Farrar. Next up, Public Health Services, Supervisor Borst, Resolution number 29.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Contract to Accept New York State Department of Health Tobacco Enforcement Grant.
Support.
Support on that, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 30.
Contract to Accept New York State Department of Health Water Enhancement Grant.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? All those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 31.
Contracted Karen Miller to provide services for the preschool program.
Support.
Okay, second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 32.
Contract to Accept New York State Department of Health Immunization Action Grant.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Going, number 33.
Oops, sorry, 33, Contract to Accept New York State Department of Health COVID Vaccine Response Grant.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 34.
Authorized purchase of handheld XRF lead paint analyzer device.
Support.
Seconds there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 35.
Contract with Seneca County, Kewa Yates Chapters NYS ARC DBA Mosaic, provide evaluations and services for the three-to-five preschool program.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? A second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Supervisor Borst, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, planning development agriculture and tourism, Supervisor Barnhart, resolution number 36.
Authorized purchase of new aircraft refueller for Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support. A second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 37.
Authorized transfer of properties to Finger Lakes Regional Land Bank Corporation.
Support.
A second there, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to table this motion.
Okay, got a second on tabling?
Hope so.
Or a second.
Okay. Any discussion on it?
The tax foreclosure process is not yet completed, so we'll have it ready for next month.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you Supervisor Barnhart. Next up, human services, Supervisor McGreevy, number, resolution number 38.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approved Seneca County Division of Human Services CAPTA-CARA contractual agreement with Children's Home of Wyoming Conference for a part-time behavioral health specialist.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 39.
Number 39, approve 2021, 2022 supervision and treatment services for juveniles program STSJP plan.
Support.
Got a second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 40.
Number 40, approve the appointment of Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board member, Julie Maslin.
Support.
A second there, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you Supervisor McGreevy. Next up is unfinished business. Anybody got any unfinished business?
I'd like to ask something. Since we all have to wear masks at the next meeting, are we gonna vote on this tonight, the plan for the ta, the chairs, or do you want to hold off on this for another month or two or three?
Well, you're not gonna have to worry about it for next month because you'll be in COVID.
Be in COVID.
Will this be done for committee meeting?
But we'll be doing committee meetings too.
Be doing committee meetings in two weeks, I mean.
Does anybody have any feelings on moving the desks around a little bit? You like it?